This is a regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education, February 21st, 2023, and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Led by Mr. Devon.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every day of justice for all.
All right, we have a few special recognition presentations tonight. First up, Brad Riffey of United Way.
Hello, everyone. A pleasure to be here this evening. I know we have some new faces on the board, and I don't think I've had the pleasure to introduce myself. My name's Brad Riffey. I'm the Director of United Way of Harrison and Daugrich Counties. And this year, we are slated to reinvest $780,000 in human resource programs right here in Harrison and Daugrich Counties. As you can imagine, Harrison County receives the bulk of that funding, but we're super excited to even offer an additional $40,000 in funding to Daugrich County programs. So we picked up Daugrich County about traditionally, we've always been Harrison County, but it was wonderful. Two years ago, we were presented with the opportunity to take them underneath our wings. So we work closely with their Board of Education too and folks down there to provide the best service and be candid as United Way to the community. In 2023, we plan on funding 21 local organizations, our partner agencies, who are focused on serving our children, veterans, homebound seniors. You may have heard of the Healthy Grandfamilies Program. We fully fund the social worker position for that program. So very proud to say that the money that you all invest in your local United Way goes back to the community, right? We're changing thousands of lives here in Harrison and Daugrich Counties. Over four, almost 5,000 people, residents, who don't have health insurance or limited health insurance and who are working adults go to health access over here, right? Over 200 grand families continue to work with their own social worker through the Healthy Grandfamilies Program. And I do want to mention that our United Way, and I can't speak for other boards across the state, but I believe that we were the only way, United Way through the pandemic, who really held on to our social worker and made sure that that funding was available. Just because those grandparents couldn't meet, we didn't think that that, I mean, we truly believed that was still a service that could be beneficial to them, considering the times that we faced. So just a few other stats, 13,000 hot meals were provided to homebound seniors through the By County Nutrition Program. We continue to build efforts with Stars in Stride, so our kids who have physical and cognitive disabilities can work with those horses on that equine therapy farm. And they've just implemented a new veterans program, so we're excited to see what that has to offer our community. We're always looking for better ways to serve. And I have to say, since the pandemic, we've really kind of, you know, stepped back and looked at it ways for us to reimagine ourselves. So when that all happened, we created the Homeless Services Program, which now runs out of our first United Methodist Church. But over the past two and a half years, 250 people locally have been connected to recovery options, housing options, we name it. So we're very blessed to be able to provide that piece. And they'll be their own 501(c)(3) here soon. It'll be called the Resonance Collaborative. Please check them out, Resco for short. Amazing folks in this community who truly, truly care about the well-being of our citizens. And you know, over the past few months, we've really established a significant partnership with the Board of Education. I think the week of Christmas or two weeks leading up to Christmas, we had four or five families with children go homeless. So being able to work with the Board of Education staff and make sure that these children are a safe place, these families have a warm place to stay, and then work on that case management piece that they need, like, why are you in this situation? How do we get you out? How do we, you know, sustain your, how do we help you sustain your life and your family's life? It's extremely important to us. I get choked up when I think about all the people that were out there serving. Our CASAs, right, following those kids through foster care, you know, being that constant in their life as they navigate the court system and maybe bounce from one foster home to another foster home to another foster home. And then the Heroes Haven Child Advocacy Center. That's where our children go when they're, when they have no other place to go. When they're maltreated, they're either sexually assaulted, they're abused, they're witness to homicide. Those people down there, and I tell Jason, I don't know how you do what you do, because they are dealing with the most difficult situations that exist in our society. I truly believe that. And our United Way is committed to funding everything that we can that's going to better the lives of our citizens. We are focused on effective, efficient programming, and that's run through our Community Investment Committee process. Normally, that would take place this spring, but that will be pushed to next year because we're going through, we're changing our fiscal year and funding cycle. And I'd be happy to talk to you more about that, because in 2024, we will be looking for some really solid professionals to join us at that, on that Community Investment Committee and take a look at these organizations. And not only, you know, figure out how we're going to slice the pie, who's going to get the funding. We all know money makes the world go around. But what else can we do as a community to rally support? So I'm blessed to be the Director. I'm extremely blessed to have the leadership that we all have here today, our Board. I know every single person affiliated with United Way of Harrison and Daugrich County just eats and breathes their community. And I think that's what's special about us, too. Our 211 rep who answers 211 calls. Let's say you have a neighbor and they don't know who to call. They need a, some sort of human resource service. If they dial 211 and they live here in Harrison or Daugrich Counties, they'll be routed to our office. And we can direct them to the best need to meet whatever they're dealing with at that time. And they're difficult phone calls, you know, but that's the beauty of it. Everybody deserves a person to talk to, not a recording, and they deserve to speak to somebody who knows and understands their community. And hey, if there's, there might be something that we just learned about that morning, go, oh, wow, this is available. We need to update the database. But then we get a call and we can get somebody to the, to the right organization to meet their needs. There's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes at United Way. You might see me on the news and you might hear me talk about programs and everything that I'm talking about now. But if we can go the extra mile and get presents for kids who don't, who won't have Christmas, if we can get hygiene items for women who are staying in the recovery house over here at the Phoenix Recovery House. And I do want to mention that it's the first women's recovery home in this area, and they're knocking it out of the park with the programming they're providing to these women. So we're headed in a good direction as a United Way, because I believe that we're thinking outside the box. Now, there's so much work to be done in this community. I don't want to get caught in the cascade effect of everything, but, but there really is. But the more people that we can encourage to really wrap their arms around this community, I think the more love and success we'll, we'll see more of that here moving forward. So I just appreciate the time that you've given me to share this. That's my, my United Way 101. But like I said, I'd be happy to meet with you and talk to you about what we do. We're about ready to launch, and I don't want to jump the gun here, but I mean, like, we're really close to launching a new volunteer arm underneath United Way that's going to be all encompassing. And I think it's really going to bring a lot of folks, more folks together to do some good work in the community. And that might be some, you know, picking up litter or, or going out there and painting, painting an organization's building or something like that. But it could also be, hey, sitting down with a child, teaching them how to read, the literacy volunteers, we fund them as well. So there are all kinds of different ways for us to serve our community, and I think United Way is the best place to start. So thank you all very much. Do you have any, do you have any questions?
Brad, would you let them know what services you have in our building here?
Yes, I would love to. So we have CASA, and they're the Court Appointed Special Advocates. They follow the children through the court system. They visit them at the home to make sure that they're being properly provided for. We have Community Action, Central West Virginia Community Action. We fund a rural transportation program through them. So they're delivering food to folks, they're picking them up, taking them to doctor appointments. And we all know transportation's a huge problem. There could be five other organizations who provide that same service. We would never look at it as a duplication of services if it was coordinated. We always encourage folks, work together, though, right? Teamwork makes the dream work. We also, up where we are on the second floor, we have Family Services, and they provide counseling and in-home care. And Healthy Grandfamilies is located in that office as well. Who am I missing? Hope Domestic Violence Center. They do periodically have clients come visit them. What's nice about this space is that it's very private in that confidentiality is honored. So Literacy Volunteers is another one. Their office is right next to ours. Super blessed to have them. They provide free tutoring services for children and adults, and they also teach English as a second language. Have you ever eaten at Mr. Taco? Well, Alma went through the program, the owner. Alma went through the program. They helped her study for her citizenship test. She passed that, and now look, she's, she owns her own business here in Clarksville. How amazing. These are the stories that we, you know, we love to share. There are a million, right? Million other stories that keep us going, but we should count our wins, too. We have a lot here in Harrison County, but like I said, we have a long way to go. So your continued support means the world to us and the people we serve.
What's your fundraising percentage?
We're at 81%. We can see a light, you know. Somebody asked me a few months ago, do you, when do you get a break between campaigns? I'm like, well, I don't think that exists. We just kind of fit, go in, we take, we go from one and fade into the next. So we're already planning things in 2024. So, but if anybody in the community has the ability to donate, to fund this organization, please consider it. I mean, your donation stays local, and it's helping our neighbors and seniors and loved ones who live right in our own neighborhood. So if you have the ability, there's always, there's a, every year, there's a payroll deduction option. You can make a one-time donation. You can call us and say, hey, ACH me every other month. We pretty much give every, every single person in this, you know, that's able to donate, every option possible to donate. So we even, we will even come to your home and pick up a check if it'll help us get there. So 81%, that's strong. I mean, $780,000, that's, so hopefully by the end of March, we'll reach that goal. But if more people could start, you know, contributing, we'd get there a heck of a lot faster. Yeah. Any other questions? I hope I answered everything. Thank you so much. God bless. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Brad. Next up, Jason Snyder presents safety in our schools.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me.
Had a very busy year this year. Very busy. Want to touch on just a few bullet points here. Mr. Paul and I, we work very close together on a daily basis. In fact, a lot of my things overlap with things that he does and vice versa. So I'm just going to kind of cover a few things and some of the things he's going to have the analytical information that he can give you for some of these as well. I'm going to start off with some of our active shooter training, Alice training that we've done for this school year. We have been able to use the Bridgeport Mobile Command Unit. It is a information center that when we go in a school, Mr. Paul and the Emergency Management Director, they are able to monitor our school cameras and watch the officers as they go through the school lifetime. And if there are any errors in any of the cameras, Mr. Paul is able to get those clarified, usually on scene, but he may have to come back and make a couple adjustments. So we've been very fortunate to be able to use the Mobile Command Unit from Bridgeport, and also a member of the Harrison County 911 Center has also been coming out with us as well. October of '22, we did the South Harrison feeder area. January of '23, we did the Bridgeport feeder area. January of '23, also Nutterford and Norwood. February, we have done Northview, WI, Liberty, Mount near Middle. We are going to go to Salem and United in April and finish out the rest of our schools. There are several others here that we are going to get, which I said in the beginning of the school year, I wanted to hit every school this year, make sure that they all receive the training. So this will, this will complete the entire school system in Harrison County and get us, keep us up to state code, make sure that we are in compliance there. Moving on to the weapon detectors that we've been gracious to have purchased through the Board and the Superintendent. Two schools are using them on a daily basis in some capacity. And we also have two schools that we are using in some capacity as well. We have, United and WI are using them pretty much on a daily basis in some capacity, are the two schools that are permanently fixed with those units. Bridgeport High School and Lincoln High School have been using them, not as an entrance point, but more of a classroom, random classrooms. We're bringing the kids through, running them through the weapon detectors, and it's been very frequent. We've got several prohibited items that have been taken from the kids that they shouldn't have in school, and they've been a very good tool for us. They're going to be moved around to a couple other schools. I spoke to the principal at RCB. They are going to be using them here before the end of the school year, and we're going to do the same thing there as well. Vape detectors is our next topic, and it's kind of a really big topic this year. We are having a major problem with vapes, along with other things. I'm going to give you just a little handout. I'm not to be too, too in-depth. If you could hand those out, I'm going to hand these out. Proper team, mate. Be calm, you.
Is this for the polite?
Speak. Give those to Rob. So the vape detectors, those are the things of what you have in your hands are two to three years old. For those of you that don't know what a vape is, that's, I'm sure just about all of you do. The schools are dealing with those on a daily basis. So I did some searching, and the handout that I gave you, the visual, this is where we're at today. These are extremely hard and pressing for our principals and staff to try to stay on top of. As you can see on the very first page, there's two pages in this in particular I want you to really look at, and that's the cell phone vape that these kids are bringing in and loading them with everything from fentanyl to EHC, among other things. The next page that I want you to look at, that was one of the most important in this handout, is it's a hoodie that is made into a vape using the strings off the hoodie. And that is the manufacturer that's, hoodie moves out. I gave these to all the principals at our last principals meeting, just things that they need to start looking out for. They're really making our jobs hard in the schools. I mean, the principals, I don't know how they do what they did. But these are things that we're going to be looking for. These kids are getting a hold of really dangerous things in school with putting in these vapes. We've got to stay on top of it and educate our kids. So these are, these are some really big points, and our vape detectors that Mr. Paul has put in with his staff at our schools are just as important as everyday life. I mean, we've got to get, keep these vape detectors up. We are getting a lot of kids with these vape detectors. He has some statistics with the vape detectors that he's going to share with you here in a minute. I think they're a really good tool that we need to use in our schools on a daily basis. So wanted to touch those with you about the vape detectors. Secure entrances, this school year, we have completed with the facilities. Looks like Nutterford, both the primary and intermediate, looks like that has got finished up. Our goal for the next fiscal year, we're hoping is to be able to get South Harrison and the middle school as well. We would like to start there. We're looking at some early plans. I've been working with the Assistant Superintendent. We're hoping that we can, we can get that accomplished this year. Access control, I believe Mr. Paul's going to talk to you a little bit about, also with the security cameras, rank one, I believe he's got some information on that as well. That's the biometric programming that we are currently working on and have been working on. We have added, it appears, well, one PRO and the possibility of another, I think we've worked out our logistics on, which will put us at nine, which is just unbelievable. I think we have just made strides with our PRO program. The one that we think are, we're going to get started here really soon is the Bridgeport Mill. We've been able to introduce Nutterford, and he also services Norwood. That's, that's been a very good addition. Mentoring these kids at such a young age is extremely important. Coming from a law enforcement standpoint, we want the kids to be very close to law enforcement at an early age. I think it helps them later in life. I really do. We don't want them running from them. We want them coming to them. So I think that's a very good start with, with the PRO program, and I'd just like to expand from there. Hopefully, you know, eventually one of these days. But we're very fortunate to have the PROs that we do now. We have a speaker that came, his name's Charles Dent. He is a, he's a former drug addict from our area. He is, he's got a very powerful story to tell. He currently works with immunity care as a substance abuse counselor. He just did a presentation at South Harrison High School and the Middle School on February 1st. We have tentatively, in speaking with WI, they have tentatively got him set up for March 8th at 12:30. He's going to, he's going to talk to the entire school. Very good education, very powerful. RCB has also got a date set up for him to come and speak to the entire school, which you're, a lot of kids, and we're hoping to grow from that as well. So that's, that is very positive. RCB has also got subcultural diversity, and the one pill can kill. They're going to be setting up some training here, I believe, this month. In speaking with the principal yesterday, that was what he indicated to me. They also have a safety fair coming up April 18th. It's going to be law enforcement oriented, as well as other vendors. They're going to do the DUI glasses and teach, you know, the teens, the dangers of drinking, as well as other things. And May 11th, they have mock DUI trials, and it's going to be for juniors and seniors. It's a jury of their peers, and they'll be talking about a lot of different issues with getting a DUI. You know, we've got a prom coming up in a few months, but they'll hopefully get these in before then. But those are some of the starts we're doing, and we'd like to move them to all the schools. But that's kind of, kind of an overview. We've got our hands in a lot of different things. And Mr. Paul is, he's going to, he's going to kind of update you on some percentages and some logistics that we've both been working on. He's been working on more than me for some of these, but he's done a really good job. He's been an asset. And I'd like to mention one other thing, the saying, see something, say something. Mr. Oliverio has got some information. It was earlier with the, the school threat. He brought it to my attention immediately, and within three hours, we, we had the person in custody, which is just amazing. So kudos to Mr. Oliverio. We really appreciated that information, and he did his due diligence, and he got to the right deal. So that was a, you know, really good save on his part, and we all worked together with, with law enforcement. So we worked really well. So other than that, I'm going to turn the floor over to, yes?
Before we turn over to him. Okay, what are we going to do with these, you know, students? You know, I don't want to call them children, students that are involved with this vaping and these situations like this? Where's the punishment going to come from? Is it going to come from your office? Or is it going to come from the principals? Or is it going to be a combination of you all working together? I mean, if we don't put some teeth into whatever punishment that should become forthcoming from kids vaping or whatever at school, as you say, it's going on, then, then we're just chasing their tail.
Right.
As far as I'm concerned. So who's, who's going to hand out this punishment?
Well, I think you kind of answered your own question. It, it's a series of both. It's, we've got law enforcement that handled depending on the child's age. They, they do through the prosecuting attorney's office, if there is a chargeable offense, depending on what is in that vape. And obviously, they're prohibited, they're prohibited from even possessing that item. So we have what I call our school bible for discipline. It falls within the guidelines on the discipline of the school. The schools have been doing exactly what discipline they're, they're allowed to do. Prosecutor is, is, is doing everything they can do as well to prosecute these cases. And of course, it depends on how many times they get caught when it comes to the school stuff. A first offense, it goes from one thing all the way up to a third offense. So it's a constant battle for the schools to continually deal with the vapes. And they just, it's constant, it's a constant thing. I get a lot of, well, I get all the discipline that comes in from the schools, and I can tell you, I get at least five or six a day of just vapes. That's just vapes. That's not counting, you know, the fights and other things that happen in the school. So I think we work closely together, both with us and the Harrison County Prosecuting Attorney's Office. And they are prosecuting any of the ones that they can prosecute. So it's, we're doing everything we can on our end, as far as the time off that the kids get. Again, it depends on if it's a school issue or it's a criminal issue. So it's handled on both ends, depending on their age.
It just, you know, it can't be a simple risk the first time. If we don't put teeth into the first time that a child, you know, we got to make it severe enough that the ones around them are going to say, I'm not going to do that because I, you know, I can't afford that kind of punishment. But if it's a mild punishment, then it's, you know, no big deal.
Right.
You know, well, Johnny only got this, so, you know, I can do it. And, you know, that's the worst I'm going to get out of it. If it doesn't have a, a big punishment the first time, you say, first time, second time, third time, you know, if it goes along those lines, somewhere along that line, this child's going to get a hold of some bad vape. And, you know, and then their punishment is done.
Right.
They'll.
But the difference is, what you're saying with the criminal, I mean, you've got difference between what the substance can be in there, whether it's a status offense or the delinquency offense.
That's right.
Meaning if it's nicotine, it's going to be a status offense, and it's going to revert back to the school. But if there are substances, then they're, then all that, and that turns to delinquency and then juvenile petitions.
And we do place children to the alternative schools.
We, we do so. Yeah, we're on seven. We get that done as well.
Okay. I just, I just want us to make sure that there's teeth in it, because if there's not, then we only have to have one child die of overdose.
I agree.
You know, in school, on school property, and then it's really going to blow up.
I agree.
It's all going to come back on all of us.
It will.
Okay. One, one part of the one pill can kill video that the DEA is putting out now, and they're going to, they want to go nationwide with it. But it was really developed through game changers to get that to all sixth through 12th graders. And it really, the message is, you can't experiment any longer. You know, it's not the same. One experiment or one time could result in death. So it's a, it's a hard message, but it's a message that kids need to hear.
And I think we're giving education out.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's, that, that's the biggest thing is educating these kids at a young age all the way up to high school.
Well, I, I mean, on the morning news and yesterday's news, you know, the big drug bust in Columbus, Ohio and Wheeling, West Virginia, where, you know, it's all going to filter towards, right on filter down through into Morgantown, they said, and first thing you know, you, you get into Morgantown, you get into Carlsburg. I just, I hope that we, we make sure that we put a lot of teeth in it. You know, and the punishment that's handed out, you know.
I agree.
I agree.
Yes, Mr. Rico. Is there anything coming from your principals and, and Ms. Julie? Um, of anything that maybe the penalty isn't stiff enough? That that needs to be looked at as far as our discipline?
I can't say that, um, a couple shaking hands out here. You know, I can't say that we've had a discussion about increasing the punishment or something of that nature. Now I will echo what Mr. Snyder said. What I do hear is dealing with vapes is a, um, daily multiple daily occurrence, especially middle school and going up. Um, so that's really the, the issue, I think, is how many times or how much time they have to spend to basically do it. They, that is, that may go hand in hand with that. Maybe that's something we can look at in some discussions. But there are times, I think the two principals here echo what I'm saying and Mr. Snyder has already said. It's a, it's a daily occurrence and multiple time of the day in several cases and it takes a lot of time.
So it's the, I'm sure it isn't the same punishment for tobacco and vapes right now, is it? Because I'm sure you're evidently seeing more vapes than you are tobacco.
I have a little policy that I like to speak to, but they're pretty similar.
They're, they're very similar. As long as it's nicotine and, and the criminal charges, you know, once you get into fentanyl and, and that sort of thing that they've, that's, then it gets to be a criminal issue.
That's what I give.
Right. But it's essentially nicotine is, is what is in vape. You know, they're, they're, they're vaping for the nicotine.
Yeah.
So.
That they're adding.
They're, yeah.
Or unwittingly receiving.
Or, um, yeah, exactly.
Is there a suspension with a tobacco violation?
Uh, I think it goes by the offenses, does it not? I'm pretty sure, yeah.
Number of offenses?
Yeah.
And then aren't they even tobacco violation, they're sent on to the court system? And they actually have to go to court for a tobacco violation?
Those are citations.
Citations?
They're a citation. And it's, they're not hearing any, any tobacco cases.
They're not hearing any tobacco?
Not, not that I've seen coming through, no. Not, not through. You talking about the criminal side?
I'm talking about the citation. I mean, I just remember when they were having, when they had tobacco or
Again, it depends on your age.
Violation, they actually, the Jamie would come in and they would actually be written citations and have to go to court and.
Yes, in the high school level, yes.
Okay.
Uh, middle school, no.
No.
Uh, because, because they've got to have at least be a certain age before they can issue that citation. But even then it's, they're, they're not going to court or
That's changed.
Put on probation or anything like that.
Maybe three years ago, they changed that?
Yeah.
The citations for middle school. So probably two or three years ago at least, yeah.
Yeah.
From the prosecutor's office.
Right.
That was changed.
Yeah. It was.
Any other questions?
Good. I'll try not to worry you out. Go. Several things that kind of echo, um, what, what, uh, Mr. Snyder was talking about. We'll start with vapes if we're kind of on it. Um, we began installing these just prior to COVID. We did a, uh, we did a, uh, kind of a pilot at two schools to see how they work, to see, you know, if we get our feet wet basically. So we, we did ten of them initially. Now we're up to fifty. Actually, we've got forty-nine installed. We keep one as a spare in case we have one go down. Um, and if you're wondering why there's an odd number, it's because United High School has five bathrooms, uh, that they needed covered. So that's why there's forty-nine. So, um, Mr. Snyder and I get reports, uh, live reports from all over the county. So, um, our, our phones are beeping and stuff all the time. So we always know when somebody's in a building, I always say. It's, it's, they're pretty quiet on Sunday, but we always know when there's a ballgame at one of those schools and, and, uh, because they're usually going off. So, um, I looked at a couple of weeks at the beginning of the year and a couple of weeks recently, just for as a comparison to go, kind of get some numbers gauge wise as far as where we're at. And this number skewed a little bit, but, uh, and I'll explain why. But, uh, we've, at our high schools, we've been able to really reduce, uh, the number of vape events, uh, reports that we get by thirty-eight percent since the beginning of the year. And that number is a little, uh, skewed because we do have winter sports. So we get reports in the evenings and, and that kind of thing. So I think the number's actually higher of, uh, of, uh, the reduction in our bathrooms of vaping. Uh, doesn't mean it's still, still going on. It's just not happening in our bathrooms as much and, uh, they're able to respond. Uh, these sensors, in your handout, you'll notice, uh, there is a, uh, an example of what they look like and a couple of the things that they can detect, that can detect, uh, vaping, general vaping, but they do detect T H C as well. Um, but they actually go a little bit further. I didn't include that because, um, they do a few things that we might, we can talk about after the meeting, uh, that, that, uh, schools use and, uh, um, as a matter of fact, uh, I was on a, I was talking to, uh, one of my counterparts in the southern part of the state and she had actually turned some of those features off. And in the midst of our conversation, I explained to the value that we use that particular feature for. And she was like, oh my God, I hadn't even thought about that. That is huge. We could really use that. I need to turn that back on. So sharing that information with other directors in the state has been very good. So, um, but we do have fifty and, you know, we still have a lot of needs. We still have a lot of areas that, uh, that we can use these. So they've been a very valuable tool. Access control, and that's the badge, uh, readers at our schools. Um, it's a dig in today just to kind of see where we are, where we'd like to be. Uh, we currently have two hundred and twenty-three, uh, doors that are covered by access control across the county. Um, seems like a lot, but we got a lot of doors. We, over the last three years, we've been able to add forty-one, which seems like a lot, but, you know, the pie in the sky for us is we love to have all of our, all of our exterior doors covered with access control. That would be the ideal situation to get rid of hard keys. Hard keys is always a problem, uh, in our schools. So, um, security cameras, uh, you just approved a, an invoice a few weeks ago in, in the budget for additional cameras that we're working on. By the end of this year, upraising additions, uh, over the last couple of years have been three hundred and thirty-six additional cameras. And those are all I P. At, at minimum two K cameras, so that was doing in the county. Um, we have the backbone to support everything that we, that we need. Uh, we just have aging cameras and we're always going to have that. So we're always going to be chasing their tails a little bit on that. So the big thing is to keep up with it and try to get ahead. And that way we can kind of level out and, uh, improve that across the county. So I do an audit every May, um, and it, it, every year it improves, it improves. I think I'll cut some of our aging cameras about in half just between the last May and this May. So anytime we can do that, I think we're, we're going pretty good. We have in the neighborhood of twelve hundred cameras we address in the county every day. So, um, Rank one came to see you guys earlier in the year, um, about, uh, facial recognition and biometric. Um, we're still working on that. Uh, a, as I talked to their engineering team, it was, uh, apparent that the initial conversations that we had, uh, our systems didn't support exactly what they wanted to do. So we had to add some pieces to be able to actually do video processing with our virtual network. So, uh, that, there was never a need for that in the past. So, uh, right now, uh, that's, that is in place. We got that in December. Uh, so right, right now we're looking at next steps and we'd actually contact with them. We'll be, we'll be probably sharing some next steps in the future. So. Over the past several years, we've worked, uh, with, uh, emergency services on, uh, uh, radio repeaters within our buildings. And, uh, we've completed five different schools with that. Uh, we still have needs. Uh, we, we, we discovered this year for the first time that, uh, there's a big hole basically at, uh, the Wilsonburg building that we weren't unaware of. So it was only when United High School moved in, they have a P R O station there, that, uh, we found a, uh, big need for the radio repeaters to that school. So we're looking, getting us back on that right now. Um, that, those projects, uh, vary. Uh, we did five schools at, at the, at the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So not cheap, but, uh, they're, it's, it's basically custom for each school. So can't really say what the cost will be out there. It's just different, they're building. Um, but, uh, with that, we're really looking at a need for cell phone boosters. That technology has really come a long way in the last five years, uh, with boosters. Uh, at the South Harrison complex, five years ago, there was no option there. Uh, basically if there was nothing, there was nothing we could boost. Garbage in, garbage out, as they say. Um, but now I know the technology is there to where they can take even a vape signal with boosters. So we're looking at the possibility of doing something like that at, at South Harrison as well as Wilsonburg because there's a big cell phone hole there. It's Mrs. Stotler. When she's driving that. So, uh, that, that's a huge need. I mean, we've, we've got to be able to communicate with our schools. Uh, our officers have to be able to communicate. It's critical. Uh, and, and we were really shocked with, at Wilsonburg that, uh, there was, there was a little service there. So, um, those cell phone boosters are in the ten K range. So none of this, everything's, everything's expensive. Everything's going on. Uh, the vape detectors, when we first started purchasing them, were, were around a thousand dollars a piece. Now they're thirteen fifty. So the last, the last round we bought, so everything is getting more expensive. Um, urgency alert, that is, uh, the system that, uh, basically that's also in your handout, uh, the system we're looking at to, uh, build upon the existing system with the beacons outside that show the red and the blue and the, um, we have, we have a program that, uh, that we're looking at. Um, that's going to cover a lot of things. Um, basically we have the infrastructure and backbone in place. It's just the endpoints kind of that we need. Uh, we also need to upgrade our software as well. Um, but that's going to cover, uh, L E D signing for the van rooms and the, uh, and the cafeterias. Um, it'll have the outdoor beacons and we can see an example of that in your handout. Um, it will have fire alarm monitoring. We don't have that across our county. We have it in the Clarksburg area because we're required to have that, but the rest of the school is not monitored by them. That's something that this system overlooks, uh, which we think is huge. Uh, this will also integrate with our intercom system, um, so that if there is, you know, any kind of alert within the building, through the building line, uh, it's also has the capability of sending a message to our, to our computers throughout the county. So everybody's informed equally. So, uh,
Can I ask real quick?
Yes, sir.
And, and, and what timeframe will everybody be informed of an event? Is it immediate? You know, it's come through the office first, filtered and then goes out? What's the?
It's, it's very, very fast. Now, the only thing that slows that down a little bit is, um, uh, your carriers, phone, cell phone carriers. And because once they take that message, it's on their end to get that ship back out to you. So, uh, but everything internal would be pr- very instantaneous. So, and, and we, even with our vape detectors, it's very fast. So, uh, we're talking seconds. And, uh, you know, the, uh, the first layer of what we have now, it, it, it works very quickly as, as, uh, as Mrs. Nancini can attest to. So it, it does work. It, it, it's very fast. So, but again, uh, that's why, uh, the first responders don't necessarily want to rely on cell phone. They want to rely on the radios, which we have the capability as well, capabilities in place now. Um, because that's the fastest way to get a message out. So cellular, uh, we've seen delays, you know, from, from thirty seconds to six minutes and it really is on the carrier as far as them getting that turned around. So it's different with every carrier. It's also different depending on where your location is, according to the tower to get you that message as well. So. But that's about, that's about all here.
I've, I've got a question.
Sure.
Uh, forty-nine vape detectors?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. How many do you anticipate, you know, to do the, uh, entire system?
Um, I've gotten different numbers on that. Um, we probably need another hundred at least. But that might be light.
Okay.
On that number.
Uh, and the reason I ask that in ahead of itself with, with, uh, uh, Mrs. Stotler, but we spoke and, and the board's really not even been apprised because it just came in. We have received it. We, we were a part of the class action settlement on the jewel, uh, manufacturer. So we were apprised, we're going to receive eighty thousand dollars for that. Uh, we don't, we haven't received that money, but yeah, I'm going to ask my fellow board members when that time comes, since that is money from a vape company, uh, that that be put back into safety and security or a combination of some additional vape detectors. But I also would like to see, we need, I think we need to boost our defibrillators in schools. We have defibrillators, but I don't know that we're covering our football fields and our gymnasiums the way we should. So, you know, that's just something I plan on asking, you know, when that money does come through that, that, you know, give a portion for the vape detectors, let's get those defibrillators. Uh, we, we ought, all people ought to be, uh, uh, champions of those. We saved a life with a defibrillator at Lincoln High School. Uh, so I, I just think we have an issue because we have one at the school. But, you know, if something happens, it could happen on the football field. So that's just my take. I'd like to see that money since it's, you know, what you would call found money. It came from the settlement. The cause of vapes, it should go back into, uh, safety.
Yeah. And we were, we worked with the principals to try to be strategic in those locations and, and where they were having a problem. But yeah.
But I'm just letting you know that that's what I plan on advocating for. Uh, and, uh, some much time to turn or when the money comes to turn that back over to safety.
How much did you say the vape things cost?
Right now, the market price, which everything seems to be a market price these days, is they're thirteen fifty. Originally, we were paying a thousand dollars for us. That's, look at eggs.
Hey, you know, you don't buy them now at thirteen fifty, you're going to be paying eighteen fifty.
And we just got a market bulk as well.
Well, when it's forty-nine that we have, if we wait too long, those are going to be obsolete. There's going to be something new.
I, I will say the, uh, fortunately all of our models, even though we bought them over a three-year period, fortunately they're all the same exact model. That's, that's great that they've not changed a whole lot. But yeah, you're right. I mean, six months from now, they'll have the, the latest one, the greatest.
I, I still think we can wait. This week's what broke the wagon down.
Yeah.
You know, so if we wait and suppose why I was saying, uh, I wrote it, as he said, take the money that you've been given and invest all for safety.
Joey, obviously.
All right, yeah.
I think he was trying to distract.
Trying to get some money thing.
That's money. That's good.
I have, I have one more thing. I think, you know, kudos to Jason and to you. You know, you were, have been able to work together and make progress and worked out there with the schools. I think that, uh, that, that goes to show, you know, if we all work together, we get a lot more done than working against each other. So, and that can go all the way through, you know, and so the schools and buildings. But I think you two have done an excellent job. You know, I've only heard good things about things that you two have done. You know, so thank you.
Anything else?
I do think, Mr. Rico, that we need, and Mrs. Nancini, that me, just a suggestion, meet with our principals about this to see where we're at there with the vaping deal. If the penalty needs to be stronger or what needs to occur there. If, if that, obviously that's a problem because you're receiving several of that. And so, and they're saying way more than you will.
Right.
Right. Yeah. How often? You're meeting monthly, safety meeting, right? Yeah. A quarterly one.
Maybe our time to say you could start there is.
Oh, yes.
It's what we do and then move, you know, move out from there. So.
Agreed.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, brings us up to our item C, secondary data update curriculum and student achievement. Mrs. Stotler.
Before I get into my, uh, presentation, I thought I would pause for a moment and point out that I have a couple of principals and a couple of, uh, new assistant principals in the room this evening.
I have Susan Pharaoh from Washington Irving Middle School, also Gary Oldaker from Bridgeport Middle School. I thought if we would just pause, I think they would like to introduce to you their new assistant principals. Susan, I'll let you go first. You can, if you can be loud enough.
I'd like to introduce Kenny Edwards. He was chosen as our new assistant at WY Middle School and we are very pleased with Kenny. He is, he has hit the ground running at WY, as you can imagine. And I also was gone a week of COVID, so he really had trial by fire and he's done a magnificent job. We are all very, very happy with him and very, very pleased with the, the choice of our new assistant.
And if I remember correctly, he's probably finishing almost two months, he began right after the holidays.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, so he'd been with us basically since January 1 in his position.
So I can, I can say I've gone to ball games and he's like the ever ready bunny. He never stops. He's going, he's helping get things set up and, and just helping with the sports table and always on the move and taking care of kids if they're not doing the right thing. I, I, you know, one I've seen, I think he's doing an excellent job for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary? This is Emily Yuris. She's our new assistant, excuse me, she's our new assistant principal. And like Kenny, she's hit the ground running, second day on the job. I had to come to principal's meeting, so she had to deal with a couple of things on her own, which handled fine. I mean, that's says a lot for her right out of the gates, have to deal with those kinds of situations, second day on the job. But yeah, I mean, the fact that he's happy, she's handled discipline. I mean, she's, yeah, she's, she's doing everything we want her to do to absolutely. We're very happy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before I get into some curriculum updates, I do have a few other highlights I'm going to touch upon. First of all, comment on the 23, 24 school calendar. Obviously, that has been submitted to the state department. And I believe early last week, we received communication. It's sitting on Mr. Roach's desk, just waiting for the final approval. But obviously we'll let you know when we do receive that. Along with that school calendar, though, we have started the planning, obviously for summer school and summer plans. And maybe more specifically, we're starting to get into some professional development of planning. I met with several coordinators early last week to start to. What I would say skeleton that out, matter of fact, it's so much of a skeleton that I've not even shared with Mrs. Mancini or anyone else. And so, once again, once we fine tune that, I'll obviously be working with Mrs. Mancini, obviously share with Mrs. Stutler at the right time. But that's professional development training for next school year, along with summer development, professional development during the summer. Child nutrition, in case you've heard in the media, there is some proposed regulation changes. I do use the word proposed as they are currently out for comment. I do have a infographic in, in your packet you can look at for the highlights. The one thing I'll comment on is for the first time, there is more than likely going to be some regulations around added sugars. That has never been regulated in the past. And maybe a little concern for how that will look for us is how will that impact breakfast? We're really concerned about that and Mrs. Harvard is keeping a close eye on what's developing, along with myself and so forth. One of our favorite subjects this year, WVEIS 2.0. Obviously, it's been a interesting year. Everyone probably laughs, fringes, cries when we talk about WEVIS 2.0. Obviously, I probably should give accolades to every school personnel that's dealt with it directly, from school administrators, counselors, secretaries, those are probably some of the key folks in the schools that, that had to work through hurdles and so forth. But moving on, we are planning for next school year. Right now, schools are gearing up for scheduling and we need to know how WEVIS 2.0 is working. Once again, we've learned a lot, but I think there's still a lot of questions out there. So I've been trying to plan an onsite training from the WEVIS office with our school personnel and also others in the county office that should attend. But I think I do have it scheduled now for next Thursday, March the 2nd. We're going to have two sessions, breaking it up between elementary and secondary. We have spoken with school principals about what the biggest needs are and what we're really targeting is scheduling for next year. So elementaries is basically just to make sure they understand how the scheduling system's working, what is best. I know I've heard people talk about, do we schedule classes for one term, two terms, and just working out those things? And once again, sometimes when I say, we want to hear this directly from the horse's mouth. So directly from the WEVIS folks in Charleston to what is the best for us. We also know from the elementary principals, they have some questions concerning discipline reports and attendance reports that they hope to be able to ask and get worked out. Secondary is real similar. They do have a little bit of a difference. So obviously, once again, the focus is how to schedule students, what is the proper way? And probably with secondary, the next part comes is how is the scheduling connected to grading? How is grading connected to transcripting? And we're moving also to an online PEP, personalized education plan. And we need to know how that's connected to all those pieces, especially the scheduling part as well. So what we learned this past year is we, we had to add classes and so forth as the year began. And sometimes that didn't connect with the report card as it should have. Once again, that's because our folks just didn't know how pieces were intertwined and so forth. So once again, with schedule, with this training, we hope to work that out from the get go and next year will be a whole lot smoother. Also with secondary, just like the elementary, we have some questions about the discipline reports and also attendance reports that we hope to get, be able to, little Q and A, we hope, and get that worked out. So. I've coordinated this with the principals, Mrs. Mancini has as well. And we're actually, I've told them to bring who else they need to have input from. So once again, that's secretaries, if that's a school counselor, whoever else, else they need to invite that day, they're, they're more than welcome to do that. Moving on, athletic directors, athletics. In case you don't know, Mr. Lopez and I started last year meeting with athletic directors three times a year. We do it right before the beginning of each sport season. So basically in late July, before the fall season begins, also in October, before the winter season begins. And actually, just last week, Mr. Lopez met with all athletic directors on Thursday, right before the spring season begins. It's hard to believe, but next Monday, spring sports can begin to practice. So once again, it's a, it's a opportunity for us to touch base with the athletic directors about concerns that have developed over the past three, four months, wherever that time span's been. And also they can bring some concerns to us and so forth. And just to make sure we do have some things covered. For example, we do talk about student safety. I am making sure they have their safety plans submitted to the SSAC on time and just make sure those things are covered and so forth. Finally, next topic is IXL. I think we have mentioned the words IXL to you. IXL would be an equivalent of iRate. IXL is something that we chose to pilot at two high schools this year, Lincoln and Liberty. Once again, we wanted a resource for the high schools to have something to be an intervention. It is not to replace direct instruction or their regular instruction, but something that could be used to maybe do a little benchmarking, but also to work on weaknesses that we've been able to see on the SAT test and any other weaknesses we've had. Probably in November, December, right when we were changing principals at South Harrison High School, their curriculum team had actually reached out to IXL, obviously IXL reached out to us. And so I did a little investigating and I learned South Harrison had actually used IXL pre-COVID. So I did a little checking with their curriculum, different teachers down there to get the background. And, but sometime before COVID, they had used IXL South Harrison. And to be honest with you, I'm not sure why that never came up because obviously I talked to all my principals about IXL, but it just never came up, but it was interesting that South Harrison had used it. Mr. Keener obviously was hired as principal at South Harrison High School. Mr. Keener had experience with IXL when he was at Phil Barber High School. So basically, January 1, we did bring South Harrison on board as a pilot as well. Obviously today, being February 21st, they might have that opportunity to do a whole lot of work and so forth. In your packet, there is a couple of reports from Liberty and Lincoln. I did even speak to David Decker at Lincoln this morning. I can also tell you Shelley McKee has spoke to Pam Knight at Liberty multiple times, just about IXL and so forth. One thing, and I've mentioned this to you before, probably a long time ago, Lincoln High School, their math scores are very, very poor. We recognize that from our test scores last year and, and really there's nowhere to go but up. So at Lincoln High School, they are trying to use some of their time to really work on math. Once again, they know that's a weakness and they really want to work on those math scores. At Liberty High School, they have been pretty well equally working on math and EOA. So the feedback that I have received from both Mrs. Knight and Mr. Decker is they seem to like IXL to be used as a remediation tool. Mr. Keener raves about it from his experience at Phil Barber High School. I've not really got into it with him, with his experience at South Harrison. Once again, he's obviously adjusting and, and gotta give him some time to get this implemented the way he would like to. And I can also tell you that I have recently spoke to the other principals, Mr. Gibson, Mr. Tomato, and even Ashley Satterfield at United, and they're actually all on board. They, I think they recognize that outside of, they just need something as an intervention tool to hopefully bring up some skills gaps. So we are planning on implementing it countywide next year and really following what we believe is a positive thing with usage of IXL. That will turn me to iRate. iRate is something that we've had in Harrison County for some time. It's also a staple throughout the state in most districts, not all, but most. I can talk to you about some benchmark data, but before I get into that benchmark data, I think I would want to emphasize to you that we had a training session for the middle school principals on February 2nd here in this office. Not to steal any thunder from Mrs. Mancini, but obviously elementary schools, same thing, which happened to take place today. The training was put on by Curriculum Associates, which is the company behind iRate. And obviously I have a couple of principals here and Ms. McKee's here, who was also in the training, and some county office people was a part of that training, but it was well received. Probably much better than I could have ever anticipated being received by the, the principals. What I would do to keep it very simple for you is the Curriculum Associates presenters, I actually went through some data reports that's available to them in the iRate database. And then more specifically, they took the data that was available to them and they showed the principals how to graphic, how to graph it. Data points, so they could actually see if students are growing or not growing academically. We were able to graph it by grade level. Then we were able to graph it by classes, individual math classes in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. And I can tell you that each of the middle schools have full intentions of going back and doing this activity with their teachers, whether that be in a school setting or maybe working with their individual teams, so that teachers can actually graph their students and can see if the students are changing to grow or, or where we have some weaknesses and so forth. I do have a sheet of paper that can give you some benchmark data for each middle school. There's actually two sheets of paper, one's math, one's EOA. Just briefly had to read it. I thought this report was pretty simple and a pretty good visual. If you just haven't yet any of them, going to oversee an overall line graph, green, yellow and red. And that major line graph is their middle of the year benchmark. So for middle schools, that was in late December. Then below that line, you will see a line that is not quite as bright, shadowed out a little bit. That is the beginning of the year benchmark. So you can see growth or any changes from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. Because I do have these in alphabetical order, Bridgeport math is the first one. So you can quickly see that at the beginning of the year, there was only 8% of the students who were above grade level. And you can see they've moved to 12% and then another 21% that's at the on grade level. So once again, you can see by just comparing the lines, the changes. I will point out one thing that can be misleading is that yellow. To be honest with you, sometimes the yellow would grow, but that's because hopefully the reason it's growing is we're moving kids out of the red. So once again, if we're moving kids from being below grade level to, to that yellow, then obviously yellow sometimes will grow.
Is that true when it says two grade levels below and three or more grade levels below?
That is correct.
And there's that many students?
There is. Once again, you're looking at iRate data. So obviously this is a result of their benchmarks on iRate.
We're kind of hanging our hat on iRate data, aren't we?
Frequently. And, and once again, I was having this conversation with Mrs. Stutler today. We are using the iRate data to find the weaknesses, because if you look below the big line, you're going to find specific areas where we can start diving into what is the problem to math. So obviously then that means we need to have teachers focusing on those specific areas, because obviously the, the test that matters is the general summative assessment come May, which we will obviously have the results in August, early September. So that's where we really hope to see gains. Now, we'll remind you, iRate questions are based upon the standards in West Virginia and based upon the same items that there'll be tested upon with the general summative assessment. There's a correlation between the two. So that's one reason why you see so many counties use an iRate data is it's correlated to the standards along with the general summative assessment.
You can also get individual student reports. The concern is, and this actually was brought to my attention today just by a parent that came in. You don't really even know this, but we were talking. He was, he had some iRate lessons that he hadn't completed. When we started drilling down in and looking at what he had completed, he was doing lessons on a kindergarten, first grade level. And he is not at that level, but he was not, when we looked at the amount of time that he was actually spending on the test, it was just a few minutes. So we've got to be careful. He, oh, he stayed on. Maybe he was probably just moving his mouse around so he would get the, the thing completed. So we've got to really pay attention when we're using these assessments. And I know that's probably one of the most difficult things as a, you know, as a school is to make sure that we're monitoring that.
I can tell you, there's, there's a way to beat iRate.
Yeah.
Okay. There's, and kids know.
Well, I'm glad you two have made that comment because part of our training and something that was brought up, and this is true more than iRate, but something that was brought up and stated was, we need teachers looking at what the students are doing or maybe not doing. And sometimes instead of it being an entire class conversation, sometimes it's important to have these individual conversations. If you go around, bring those students up to desk or speak to them at their desk about what's going on, that can have more of an impact on that student. It may be a very short conversation, but part of our training dealt with having those individualized conversations. Sorry. Well, that was it. I just like, so.
I've got a thumb going on here.
The youth?
Yeah.
I, I'm just really concerned with the number of students who are two and three grade levels below.
Yeah, that's a big problem.
That's a large number.
That's a large number. I mean, is that, do, have those students actually been looked at? I mean, uh, um, I don't want to say looked at, but um,
Is this all students, all across all subgroups?
When it comes to the I-Rate data, it would be, yes, yes.
Because actually, uh, Susan Miller is really digging down into the special ed subgroup. And she just, I haven't had a chance to look at it yet across the board. And I think she brought that down to share, and then we will share that with you, because that, that's part of this population, but not all of it. So.
Well, and I should say.
Concerning.
Yeah, and I should say to you too, outside of this um, outside of the data that you're looking at in the folder, we have, I, I wanna give a little of brown credit, because maybe she's leading this charge and she's been working with um, Justin Kiefer, a little bit with Amy Webster, but we've been taking uh, our access to data and bringing it down to subgroups. Because once again, some of the issues is, is some of our subgroup areas. So they are starting to break that data down, and actually they just provided with the principals two weeks ago or last week, y'all can speak up and correct me, but they just did provide to the principals, they break down that data so they can start sorting it by the subgroups and take a closer look in those areas and so forth.
You can't love them all, you know, you can't love them all in one basket. Like say, you have to, the ones that are having trouble need, need the most help. And so if you have the subgroup that's, you know, before you get a low level, and those are the one, those are the children you need to, you know, that they need to turn their focus more so not, and it's not as much when the other group says, you know, they're advancing.
Well, once again, I do think we gotta um, and I should say this to you also. This was the first training on I-Rate since pre-COVID. And once again, COVID did interrupt things. And um, this was the first training the principals have went through of any training, and obviously we have some new principals. Uh, but maybe more importantly, we need to get to some training with the teachers. Because we've obviously had a turnover with teachers and some training for them is gonna be very helpful, I think. Because like you said, we've got to look at individual students a little bit closer to see what we can do to help them.
Seems like the I-Rate of the, the data comes back often in late the year. Let's see, I, I, I would think that would be a problem. I mean, especially if you could have it there sooner, where teachers could work on it if they wanted to during the summer and have that ready to go whenever they were ready. I don't know that that's something that obviously we can help out, but this seems like that's a problem.
Well, maybe what you're saying, uh, what I've always felt is our general summative assessment test data comes at a bad time. We're not getting that data until
Sixth, August or September.
Late or early September, school has started and it becomes a challenge for us to be able to go over it with the
and plan.
Yeah, I agree with you, I understand.
And I-Rate, we do a beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year anyway with that, and then lessons in between.
Correct.
We just have to make sure that those lessons are targeting where the child's at.
You're correct.
Allowing them just to sit and do lessons that don't relate to their skill level.
Yes.
The other thing that we got this week, and Lola provided it, and I'll have her share that with you when she gets all the information, is we just got a comprehensive report on the Summer Soul program, and they looked at all the children across the state and the ones that participated, and they broke it down by counties. And you could see the effects of, of the Summer Soul program. Like, did we make any gains according to uh, our kids last year in Summer Soul and then what they did the previous year? It's interesting, Anna, to, to see that. But we targeted the Summer Soul last year, the emphasis was on math and English. First year, we were kinda all over the place with what we did, and so we're gonna do that same more of a target just on E L A and math with the Summer Soul support.
As, as Lola was saying, the material gets back to like the scores and what have you. And this is after they've already scheduled for the, the, you know, the, the year coming up, the kids in certain classes. I think there has to be some flexibility built into, once you get the scores and you see, you know, students that are deficient in some areas, that they could be moved to another class, maybe another teacher excels better than in a math area than somebody else. You know, it's on the other side of the, of the equation. And you could move some of the kids, you know, you could exchange them, say, well, we need, we need to move these five over to this is so and so for math. And we can take these five and move them over here that are working and work with the math teacher there. Uh, I, I think sometimes we put ourselves, we, we back ourselves in a corner saying that, you know, well, you're there, you're gonna be there for the whole year. And, you know, if they're already behind, they're gonna get farther behind during that school year, I think. You know, and that's my opinion, and we know what opinions are. And uh, so uh, but I, I, I think that there has to be a little bit of flexibility. And going back to what you said, well, I'm right there on this Weavis. You know, you hear about it all, but we, we're in state meetings and you hear about Weavis and all that there. My thing is, when you, when the principals get together with you and whoever, I, I, I think it has to be the principal, the assistant principal, your guidance counselor and, or guidance counselors, your secretaries, those, those four or five people are the backbone of your, your scheduling program. I mean, I knew the first time I ever had to schedule, uh, I probably made about thirty-seven schedules. You know, and then started placing kids. Uh, and then Mr. Tucker, he came in and we worked together, but at the same time, you know, you've got to include your guidance counselors, uh, and you've got to include your uh, you know, your secretaries in the meeting. And I, instead of saying, well, the principals can bring whoever they want. Well, I think it'd all be the principals and those other three groups, and they live for somebody else in the building that they wanna bring, they bring them also.
No, that's who we're targeting them. Once again, some schools function a little differently, so if they, some schools may not need to bring their secretary, some may. Guidance counselors for the secondary is a, is a key person, so yeah, they're invited and so forth.
Yeah.
I'm not expecting teachers to be there.
It'll be mandatory that they come, because like I said, the secretaries work so hard. When a new student come in and they've been enrolled in your school, then they gotta go in the Weavis and set it up and, you know, and help set up their schedules and things of that nature there. Or at least my secretary that I used to have, she helped us tremendously with that. And uh, so, you know, it's not, well, if you want to bring them, it's mandatory. These are the only people we expect to have at the Weavis meeting. Because this Weavis thing, from everything I hear, is just, it's permanent, statewide.
There's been several hurdles we've had to jump this year.
Yeah. Some of them I haven't heard, some of them never made it over the hurdle, and all they said. And uh, another thing is, we've just hired some new principals. So they hired new assistant principals, and we've got people on the agenda tonight that are going to retire. And so they're going to have to be replaced. And if you're replacing people within, then you're, they're gonna hire another assistant principal. And I, I don't know what uh, Mrs. Stutter's plan is, but I think once we accept the retirement, we know those people are gonna be there for the rest of the year. But we go ahead, post it right now and hire a principal. And then, since we hire those principals that are principal and waiting, then we turn around and we hire, let them hire their assistant principals, so they're all ready to go, hit the ground running. And we don't wait till they are tuned higher. We get them hired now and everybody knows, you know, who's gonna be the principal. But, you know, Johnson and Sampson, and who the assistant principals will be. I just think that that, to me, that's what I think ought to happen. Take that, be with what you want, so, okay.
I just need to say, I'm just like doing some basic math, because you know, as a music person, I can only count to eight thirty at times. So um, I'm just trying to be, and I'm just looking at Bridgeport Middle School, and I just pulled this up. Um, out of five hundred and forty-four students that were assessed, thirty-one percent are two or three grade levels below. That makes no sense, thirty-one percent, something, I mean, and, and then some of these other ones are, are forty-eight percent, fifty-four percent. Half of the student population that tested is two or three grades below. That can't, something's, I don't understand, but it's either the test or like you said, they're not watching them, or the kids are playing games.
So there's, they, they leave it on. And they skip, and they can, they can skip through the questions. And I mean, there, there's ways to just go around doing the actual assessment, doing the actual I-Rate questions.
I, I can't believe that Harrison County, I mean, that the children in Harrison County are two and, half of them are, are two and three grade levels below. Grade level, I, I can't. That's, that can't be right, can it?
Gary, any thoughts?
I know you're new to it. Um, well, I, I can tell you that um, some of the things that I hear.
Are, are you a math, are you a math teacher?
What's that? Is it, weren't you a math teacher? He's a math teacher, Mr. Wilson.
There we go, see, right there, there's your answer.
It's, it's hard to get it to take seriously. I mean, that's a big problem we have. We try to incentivize it uh, with uh, you know, extra intermural time or uh, some sort of uh, prize or drawing. But um, that's, that's our biggest challenge, Susan, I'm sure you'll agree, but getting them to do it seriously. So I mean, some of that data is probably a little skewed. But um, yeah, I mean, we, we have some kids that are, that are two or three levels below. I don't think that thirty-one percent's a figure, but I would say that there's definitely a certain percent of our population that's struggling. And um, you know, our math teachers, they're looking at the uh, benchmarks and they're trying to, you know, look at some curriculum things. I met with my eighth grade math teachers just last week. So I mean, we are using the data to some extent, but I mean, we don't put, you know, a hundred percent of our faith in it because we know it's flawed. I mean, it is, I mean, but it's still, it's still a good evaluation tool, it really is, if you can get the kids to do it seriously. That's the biggest thing, but it is, I'm telling you, that training we had, being an old math guy, showing that data was, I mean, there's a lot of good things in that program. We can just get it to where we get the kids to take it serious.
And I, and would you both agree that part of our next step, um, hopefully sooner than later, is working with and training with the teachers on what they can get from I-Rate and how to use it.
Absolutely, and I'll be honest, teachers still think it's going away next year. I mean, it's one of those things where a lot of the teachers that have been there for years, and I'm, I'm one of them. You know, these things come and go, so they're still thinking. And I, I, last week I had to say to them, listen, I-Rate is not going away. It's my understanding that we're signing another contract. So we need to really get on board, they need to take more ownership of it. Yes, they monitor in the classrooms daily. Our county, um, at our level, students are to pass two lessons a week and have forty-five minutes each week in E L A and math. So you're extremely right when you say the kids get on there and they just keep hitting the mouse or they keep touching the iPad to, to let it roll. They do that, absolutely, um, because they tell me they do. I, I've walked into classrooms and that's what they're doing. Even if a teacher has the Apple classroom on her iPad and she can see where they're at on their iPad, even if she's sitting still, there's still a way, they split screen. I mean, these kids are smarter than all of us with these iPads. They're split screening, they're, they're just timing themselves out, it, it's very frustrating. We try, um, like Gary said, we try incentivizing, we try contests. Um, our seventh grade just won um, the most passed lessons for the month of January. I mean, you know, we just try different things all the time to keep them motivated and interested and let them know how, how important it actually is.
Are all of these kids assessed at the same time?
Um, during benchmark, yes, yes. If we can get in our school, if we can get the uh, technology to stay up, oh, long enough. Sometimes that's a challenge. Well, I know, I mean, Christina was, is here, and I know when we benchmarked at the high school, if you reached a certain point, you didn't have to do it anymore. So.
We have in our school, very few that, that test out that need to go to that next level.
I'm sorry, say it again.
We have very few that that happens.
Is that what, that would happen with?
But did you just, you, did you do three diagnostics for the year?
Every year we do.
No, I'm talking, you were talking about when you were.
Yeah, we did our first one, everybody did the first one. If they scored a certain, if they scored a cer- certain benchmark, they were done. They didn't have to do it again. And we just worked with the rest of, and then the next group, they did the second one benchmark. Of course, they did all the little, the little uh, lessons in between. And when I got to the second benchmark, if they made that score, they were done.
Well, you said you were at the high school, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Was this I-Rate you were using?
No, we didn't use I-Rate. I can remember it was some sort of benchmarking system, but it was benchmarking.
Okay, that makes sense then. I was confused.
It was still benchmarking.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Do you use that incentive or have you or?
We haven't this year, yeah. Well, I haven't, I mean, you know, we're transitioning right now, but uh, I mean, we didn't at the beginning of the year, Mr. Raz and I didn't. But we have it in fact.
I mean, it seemed to work for us. I mean, they, they really wanted to do well the first time. And they wouldn't be scrolling.
And once again, that's food for thought, as we have some discussions. You know, something that we can definitely consider, look into, and give it a try. I mean, there's nothing wrong with trying anything really, so.
One of the middle school principals that I've worked with, I got me and its mom today. They thought that if they could, and I already will not want you to do this, I'm like, that if you were a seventh grader, you took the beginning benchmark, you were on level, you didn't have to do all those lessons. And they would have an incentive to not have to do that. So when they, and that's sort of the same thing, and that was.
But I, you know, they end up using, like you said, we buy it, they want you to use it, and they want you to use the lessons. But like I said, I, I agree, if you do a diagnostic at the beginning of the year and the kids know that that really matters and they may not have to do fifteen lessons after that, they're gonna put the time in. And then the kids that maybe aren't where they need to be, use that as the intervention tool to work with those select kids that need that additional support. It could be another tool to use to provide additional instruction instead of just massively. Because we talked about that a year, several years ago when we were looking at I-Rate. It has to be something that's valuable.
We had kids so close that they would actually say, can I take it again? I'll do better this time, so they don't have to do it again or keep doing those um, lessons.
Do they get more, does the company receive more money for the more students that take the test?
No, they say that the more you can do the lessons, the higher your score will go. And this correlates with, to me, it's the summit of, this is the closest thing that correlates with it. So the more you do, the better you're gonna be. But I'm under the impression, I'm under the philosophy, you have a good teacher, this is gonna come anyway. And if your teacher teaches those standards, that's what they're supposed to do. Uh, but we don't need something, we have to have a bench.
Bench, benchmark, beginning, middle, back end.
No, it's all the behind and all the way down. But why run a kid into ground with a program that you want him to later take seriously? If you could give them a break along the way. They still take the middle of the year, make sure they're there. And they take the end of the year, make sure they're there, but they wouldn't have to do two lessons a week. That would be, or any time might be for homeschoolers.
Yeah, I think sometimes, the, the, sometimes they, why run them into the ground? Sometimes they're just doing it because they've got to get minutes, they have to get so many minutes.
That's even happening with elementary. Usually they do everything you ask.
And one downfall, if, if they do that, then it's, the program builds upon their skill level. So if they're just click, 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 they don't even read the questions, it's gonna bump them back to that second grade level.
And it's correct, in this day.
That's, yeah.
In this day.
When that dad comes here. What's going on here, and that's why, that's exactly why that happens. So would it help if they do the first night, they make a certain score, and then they don't have to do anything after that? Would they be more apt to, I mean, have to do their classwork, of course, you know, and learn the concepts building upon what they're learning in class? And by the time they get to the benchmark, they should still be in that score range.
Right.
Alright, so they wouldn't have to continually go through that same process. Because does it accelerate past?
The idea is that if they get to that skill level on grade level, it's gonna keep. The idea is that if they get to that skill level on grade level, it's gonna keep bumping them up, so you have those students who may not always get accelerated lessons, unless they get in there and start working on those. And teachers can assign lessons to kids who may be accelerated, or kids who need extra, they can assign either in, into the spectrum.
Uh-huh, uh-huh, that's one you can use.
I think what I'm hearing is we need to.
Oh, yeah, we.
If you guys can give, get back to something, you know, let us know where that, because otherwise we'll go beat it.
Yeah.
It's good conversation.
Yep.
I think we'll all be.
Yeah.
You're good.
We all great feeling.
All right, that, uh, well, real fast, I just wanna bring one, I wanna ask one question, from an elementary standpoint, okay? And I've been brought, this has been brought to my attention three times this week, and it pertains to I-R-E-D, and it pertains to, uh, recess time, I wanna make sure one hundred percent clear that, 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 that when you, when you have, and I'm saying this the right way, that you cannot penalize child with recess, because they don't get their I-R-E-D.
We just addressed that, we heard that it happened, yep. It's absolutely not acceptable, yeah.
Thanks. Nothing is supposed to be in there.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. We're.
All right, that breaks us down to, uh, item four, delegation, speakers before the Harrison County Board of Education are asked to express themselves in a civil manner at all times, with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by the content of your comments. While it's not the intent of the Harrison County Board of Education to ever stifle public input into our deliberations, all speakers should be aware that if your public comments made here today violate the rights of any other person, especially under laws of defamation or invasion of your privacy, you may be held legally and individually responsible. If you're unsure of the factual nature of the claim, comment, or allegation you're about to make, the Harrison County Board of Education strongly encourages you to consult first with your legal counsel. Uh, two delegations tonight, first up Christina Robinson.
Here to donate time. We address that. Good evening, and thank you for providing me the opportunity to address the board. I'd like to extend my heartfelt gratitude for the recent recognition of school counselors during National School Counselor Week. It was greatly appreciated. Most of you know me, but for those of you that don't, my name is Christina Robinson. I am a mom to almost sixteen-year-old twin boys and a school counselor at Bridgeport High School. I felt compelled to speak this evening after listening to numerous delegations attempt to sway you to ban books they deemed inappropriate. I will spare you topics such as pizza gate, hot dogs and pizza, kidnapping of children by CPS, the gay agenda, pornographic books, and finally Chinese super soldiers. I will, however, be speaking as an ally and an advocate for all students, including LGBTQIA+ and BIPOC, which is Black Indigenous People of Color. As a parent, my goal has always been to raise good humans. Just recently, I had a teacher with lunch duty pull me aside to share a story about my boys. She shared that a relatively new student who happened to be of a different race approached my boys at their lunch table and asked them to sit with them, and asked to sit with them, realizing there was no room at the table, they picked up their trays and moved to an empty table with a student. A few seconds later, their friends joined them, in my opinion, that is what good humans do. They welcome, include, and build relationships with others without judgment. How did I instill these behaviors in my boys? We read books about Rosa Parks, Martin Luther King Jr., Harriet Tubman, among many others. We learned about individuals who are of the LGBTQIA+ community. We acknowledge that some lives are inherently more difficult due to the color of their skin, gender identity, sexual orientation, or simply whom they choose to love. We educate ourselves and learn that differences are something to embrace, not eradicate. As a school counselor, it's imperative that I be a safe space for all of my students. A safe space is a place where students feel confident that they will not be exposed to discrimination, criticism, harassment, or any other emotional or physical harm. Additionally, according to the American School Counselor Association, ASCA, school counselors recognize all students have the right to be treated equally and fairly, with dignity and respect as unique individuals, free from discrimination, harassment, and bullying based on their gender identity and gender expression. Similarly, ASCA's position statement on racism is that school counselors work toward cultural competence and engage in anti-racist actions by advocating to change racist policies, procedures, practices, guidelines, and laws contributing to an effort in student academic career and social emotional development. I am firmly opposed to the banning of any books solely on the basis of it making someone uncomfortable. We can't whitewash history to rewrite it with a version that makes others feel more comfortable. We can't pretend racism didn't exist, it did, and it's rampant in today's society at large. Sadly, history does repeat itself. One of the speakers from the last meeting said she wished people could see the steps that are happening because they're incremental. I concur with her statement, however, from a completely different perspective. Yes, I too wish others would recognize what is happening to our society on an incremental level. Remember, the Holocaust didn't happen overnight. The banning of books relating to certain races, ethnicities, or one's sexual orientation and gender identity only serves to make the jobs of school counselors and educators exponentially more difficult. How are we supposed to make all students feel accepted, safe, and protected when we ban books containing characters with whom they can identify? Banning such books sends the message that these students are less valuable, less worthy, and simply less than. That is certainly not the message that I hope to convey to any student. The freedom to read stories about people of diverse sexual and gender identities can validate and empower all youth, especially those who may identify as LGBTQ. When LGBTQ youth do not see themselves represented in the stories or art around them, they can internalize negative messages about the value of their own personal stories. LGBTQ representation in literature can also promote tolerance and acceptance of all human difference, including sexual and gender identities. Before I conclude, I would like to respond to some statements made by speakers present during the last meeting. Mr. Myers from Reynoldsville, who categorized the, to quote, "identify as" community as having mental issues. I've been a counselor for over twenty years, and I also hold certification as a licensed professional counselor. As such, I provide private counseling with a community organization outside of my school counseling job at Bridgeport High School. As a counselor, I was trained to utilize the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders, more commonly referred to as the DSM. I scoured every edition of the DSM and have yet to find "identify as" listed in any of the diagnostic criteria. Mr. Myers and like-minded individuals should really lead the diagnosing of mental illnesses to the professionals trained to do so. Statements such as his can increase depression, anxiety, and suicide among students who may already be struggling with isolation and just want to be accepted. Since Mr. Myers referenced the suicide rate among the identify as community and recommended that we quote, "read the suicide rate," I did just that. According to the National Library of Medicine, eighty-two percent of transgender individuals have considered killing themselves and forty percent have attempted suicide, with suicidality highest among transgender youth. Furthermore, the CDC conducted a youth risk behavior survey in two thousand and fifteen and concluded that nine out of ten LGBTQ students regularly confronted teasing, bullying, and sometimes violence. LGBTQ students were one hundred and forty times more likely than heterosexual students to miss school due to safety concerns. And one out of three LGBTQ youth attempted suicide or had suicidal thoughts. Youth in schools with pro-LGBTQ policies report fewer thoughts of suicide. When assessing suicide, we consider risk factors and protective factors. Some risk factors are intervenable, such as interpersonal and environmental microaggressions, or environmental microaggressions. Examples of protective factors include school belonging, family support, and peer support. Mr. Myers is correct that the suicide rate of transgender youth is quite high, but not for the reasons he stated. It has escalated because transgender youth across the country have become targets of bullying, harassment, and microaggressions. Oftentimes, they lack the supportive family and relatives, they are left to turn to school and peer groups for acceptance. Schools must remain a safe space for these students to feel supported and included. We must add to protective factors, not increase risk factors. We've all heard the old adage about sticks and stones, times have changed and society has evolved. Words hurt, words cut, words damage, and sometimes words can even kill. We must become more attuned to the gravity of the spoken word and the detrimental effects it can have on others. Finally, I would like to respond to statements made by Mrs. Jo Plyvon, who referred several, who referenced several books she'd like Harrison County to ban from school libraries. The first book mentioned was Feminist Baby. While thumbing through the pages of the board book, Ms. Plyvon read the excerpt, Feminist Baby Makes A Lot Of Noise. She also added that she didn't make lots of noise, but she tells the truth. Well, Ms. Plyvon and I vastly differ on this sentiment, anyone that knows me can attest that I will make a lot of noise when it comes to advocating for my students. She also, she also referenced another board book entitled Mommy Mama and Me. This one depicts the gentle nurturing relationship of a lesbian couple in their little one. Ms. Plyvon was quick to mention that there's also aversion for dads as well. I have yet to discover how this book is so offensive, since we have children at all levels of schooling who are being raised by same-sex parents. Maybe Ms. Plyvon might consider some introspection as to why she would like to ban such a book. An additional board book reviewed by Ms. Plyvon was entitled A Is For Activists. A quick synopsis of the book includes promoting social awareness. Again, I'm struggling to decipher the offensive nature of this book. I do, however, thank her for introducing me to the beautiful words included in this book. In fact, I'll conclude by reading the last page, wondrous world, wondrous we, we cannot be whole, we cannot be free unless we delight in diversity. Thank you.
Did you wanna replay your time?
No, thank you.
And move us down to item five, superintendent's update.
Sure, I have just a few things, I wanted to update you, the finance, uh, I think, I think you gave them a copy of the financials. You should have that, and we're currently being audited by Tetricon Bartlett right now on those financials, so she should be here, I think she's gonna finish up this week.
Uh, tomorrow, they have some business, bus garage, so, and stories, or buses, of that nature, maybe, yeah.
Then we should get that report, I'm thinking the end of March, generally, so let me get that, that report. They had extensions last year, Career Center's financials are complete.
They were there.
And they were working on there.
You worked with them, and then now they're, they're clear, okay.
Yeah, I spoke with Tetricon Bartlett, Mary from Tetricon Bartlett, she said, last year, they had given them lots of extensions because of COVID to get things completed, this year, they're back on the typical schedule, and they've got till the end of March to get those completed for the school.
Oh, man, good, thank you.
Things are moving on, we'll have that information when it's ready. Also, we're working on, I just met with Ms. Gleesberg to talk about, she had a chance to meet with all the principals on their wish list for personnel for next year, and we're going through that right now, she's preparing any transfers or whatever needs to happen. We've got some requests for additional cooks in some buildings, uh, some additional maybe custodial. So we're getting those from the different departments. You're gonna need a, probably a personnel meeting, so I didn't know whether that's on, I know Angela has some dates. The hearings are always those two April meetings, is when you have the personnel hearings, if we need any, so we usually schedule those in April. So.
Look, there's, yeah, there's, there's some additional meetings, I support, five-thirty is statutory meeting we're required to hold, uh, on March twenty-first, five-thirty.
These are budget meetings, these are the ones that are budget meetings, but generally, there's one that's.
Right, personnel as well, but, i- i- while we're on this, real quick, we'll do the, these additional meetings on the, on the budget. Uh, statutory meeting we're required to hit, March twenty-first, five-thirty, so there's no objection to that. Uh, the reconvene, it's the same meeting, we opened it up on March twenty-first, but then we'll reconvene uh, for a real quick time on, uh, April eighteenth. And basically, it's just to accept levy rates, I believe, uh, at that time. Uh, and that's five forty-five, April eighteenth. April eighteenth, we also would like to schedule a work session for the budget, uh, this dates here, five o'clock, I'd rather move that to four thirty. Yeah, that's right, but I'm gonna make sure it's on record, we'll move it to four thirty, uh, being that that's your first budget to go through, we kinda need to lay the groundwork on how the budget, uh, is constructed, how it works, and then give us some more time to talk about, uh, that, I think, forty-five minutes is a little bit too short, so we'll.
Is that our regular? That they go in?
Uh-huh. Yes, yeah, it, it, right, and the reconvene, or the reconvene will be right at five forty-five, and then the regular meeting's six, so that leaves us three that day.
Now, you realize that there's personnel hearings, they're gonna have to be done these April meetings as well.
Eighteen, well.
Pick a different day.
We, we have three on that, we haven't had hearings recently, but if we do, we can set those at a, at a separate date, they don't have to.
Okay, as long as they're done prior to April one.
I mean, we can set them.
I mean, uh, thank you.
So we have to.
Transfer letters have to be out by April one.
I tend to rather, yeah, set these budget, because we know what we're working with, and then the personnel, if we have hearings coming, we'll set the hearings.
If you would want to have special personnel meeting, we could do it like at that first meeting, March the seventh.
That's pretty early, that, that's your next, that's our next meeting, March sixth.
If you have that on the plan, right.
You would, if that's.
Letters maybe at that point that you're gonna have.
So we wanna do that pregame, prior to that, or you just wanna update us in the meeting? How about we just don't plan that now, and if you have it ready for the next meeting, put it on the agenda?
Okay.
So, yeah, the budget work session will be four thirty instead of five, and then budget meeting for, uh, May sixteenth. And then that gives us time because, and then final budget approved, May twenty-third, but if we do the bu- budget meeting, May sixteenth, if it looks like we have to have something between, then if we need an additional meeting, we can always add it in there. But we'll, if there's no objection, we'll do these, the only change to the list you have would be four thirty instead of five for the budget work session. Everyone go with that? Okay, if there are no objection, then we'll run with this.
May twenty-third, what time, May twenty-third?
Well, the, I thought the final budget could just be.
In the regular meeting?
Yeah, the budget, yeah, it's, it's just, it's just a, an item in the agenda.
That was just if you.
Yeah, that's not an additional meeting, okay. If we need one, we can put it in there, but that'll just be a budget approval meeting, so really, we're only dealing with four meetings. And we can always add, but.
Add for personnel, generally, there's one for her to present. And then one of the work sessions, well, there was all the job descriptions too, that's gonna be a work session to really kind of look at that as well.
Yeah, we can do that, but.
That could even be later, I was wanting to make sure that was.
Let's, let's say you look at the principal's wish list, they want extra this, and extra that, and all that, and that's gonna figure into the budget, you know? If, if you agree to, if you agree to some of them on the wish list, then you've gotta figure it into the budget, and everything, so then that's, we're gonna change that, once you've already set a budget, you're gonna.
For salaries.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's where, that's gonna throw a wrench out there, so, I don't know, I'm one of them, I think, you know, try and get, let's try and get personnel done as soon as possible, and then that throws us.
At least overall plan, I think you have a good idea.
I didn't expect.
That, that's really all I had, I think, I don't know whether, did you have an update, Mr. Lopez on facilities?
I probably don't have anything, major.
We did close up, too.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that, okay.
We did close, we terminated our foster building.
And your, your bank account went up a hundred and sixty-five, I'm all there.
We have.
Be careful how you say that.
There's an online office right now for Adams.
Yeah.
Adams and Adams are online.
Yeah, all, all the contents we're selling at Adams is online, and the lead basement, I believe, should be online this week as well, those items. Uh, just real quick, the Simpson project was sorted this week with the roof, and mainly in the area that, uh, had had problems leaking. And they will then, uh, pull off the job after that part is completed and come back and finish, do the round. RCB is out on the street now, their advertisements, we have a pregame meeting, March first, and then a bid opening on March the twenty-first. So, and then we'll be working with Bridgeport Middle School, which delivers every two weeks. Um, and, and really a big thing as we move forward with these projects for the roof and the HVAC is the fact that we need to see how much the, the roofs, both Liberty and RCB are gonna come in at. So we'll know how we can move forward with a lot of the other projects, you know, just to try to stay within budget. But other than that, uh, But other than that, work with John Jeffers and McKinley. Extremely organized and attention to detail with these projects. I'm extremely pleased with that fact. Because they seem to be really organized with the scope. You know, anytime you get into the projects, you're going to need electrical upgrades. And so they're, the, the engineering is doing a nice job of that.
Does that include the gym, all the gymnasiums?
That is correct.
Okay.
And they'll be finished by winter, the.
Well, I can't really say. I know that we would like for them to hurry up, but our problem is, let's try to figure out how much all the items are going to cost in putting it into right order. So, you know, the goal is to get them finished before the fall.
It's a Tetris board. You're going to get the amounts and then you add this in. You may have to take one out or whatever, and then supply chain them all.
Yeah, there's, and that's part of the problem. Like, I'll give you a, for instance, and I know that we'll talk about this one. The, the South Harrison complex. So when you get in there and you have a lot of HVAC, you're going to have, you're going to have nine units on the high school and a few units on the middle school. That building was built back in the 60s, so it still has the same electrical entrance. But it's going to have to have a new switchgear put in. There's a lot of things that are, you know, unforeseen sometimes when you add those. So that can limit, you know, some of the timeliness of some of those projects. But the goal is, let's do this right once. And I know we want to hurry up and get it done, but let's not compromise the, what we're doing to be able, one, is stretch our money out so that we can get a lot of these projects completed and, and do them right. First time. That, that's our goal.
Good goal. I have a facility at other that's outside of that. Do, do our, do your people have the ability, you know, with lifts and all that to do power washing? Will we farm that out?
No, we can, we can do it. We have a lot of it. Now, we can do it.
I was just thinking like the RC Burger building looks bad.
If you look at all those split blocks, that was the biggest mistake ever to go with that.
There was the fat at the time.
Yeah, it was a fat, but all of it, 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 it collects moisture and it gets dark looking. So, yeah, that is something we can do.
It just, it just turned out to me that it looked like, you know.
If you look at Greatport Middle the same way, several buildings are like.
With that, maybe it's drywall and like.
Also, I'll tell you on the electric.
Not for always.
February the 27th, Mark Messel, the gentleman that spoke here, he is going to be a photo at 11:30 in on February 27th, dates where that. So those of you that would like to be involved in that, that would be great for you to show up. And then, of course, March the 1st is the first day that Angel will be able to provide.
That should be a press conference at 11:00.
There'll be, there'll be a press conference that day. You're all welcome to come out. It's Friday, the first day.
It's a decor.
11:30 for terminal. So the Victory Elementary.
It'll be a short ride.
You're all welcome. There are different things at the conference.
And that's all I have.
That's all I have for superintendent's update. Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Okay.
I'll interrupt just for a second. Just for the public, I know you've updated us because it was spoken about the books and you had given us an update that you.
Oh, actually, we did a search of the Destiny Library, all of our E library databases. And those books are not in our libraries. We did a pretty thorough search. And I am meeting with Mrs. Plybone this week. She wanted to come in for a meeting, so.
I think it's not in our side next week.
Paul, how many people are streaming now? Can you tell?
We did that the very next morning. He said checked.
Just five.
So my wife and four other people.
She better still be on there. She just wants to make sure you're here.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
If you hear me then, honey, go feed the horses.
Do we have any more information on our operational survey? That survey, we, that, we haven't gotten a response back from WVU. We were working with the survey department. Have you heard anything, David?
I have not.
So.
We'll update this one, you know, when we do. All right, to move us down to approval consent items.
Make a motion to approve consent items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those, the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries out of state professional leave request and out of state travel, travel study request. We have a motion.
Good goal in our script of our heart. Who is this week here?
Who is it?
Does the same. Student 65.
Oh, no, it's paying for the show.
Robert Seabird, the show clerk.
Is it this week? Yeah.
Robert Seabird, show farm competition, Carol Philbin. Oh, thank you. Their funding.
In the shower.
All right, motion to accept the out of state professional leave and out of state travel study. Second.
Been moved in seconded. Any discussion? All those, the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries financial statement fiscal year 2022. That's what you gave us in front of us, so. Is that a?
So.
I was going to say, we have it on here to approve.
Right.
Oh, we just received it. Can we table this till the next meeting?
Yeah, it just needs to be noted that we've brought it to your attention at state. That's why I presented it to you.
How about, how about if someone makes a motion and we receive it?
I'll make the motion. Have you received the financial statement for the Harrison County Board of Education? For fiscal year 22?
Is there a second? Okay, yeah, and I just want Tom to read it. Is it, we're just making a motion to receive it. So is there a second?
Do you want to not get the highlights next time?
Yes.
Next time, under superintendent's update, you can do the financial highlight of that. No, that's, okay? Don't give them time to.
We have a second.
Have questions.
Mr. Travis.
Oh, I'm just calling.
Uh, any, sorry, as further discussion? All those, the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
399, I have one.
Bring this down to personnel matters and with the personnel agenda addendum, which is in front of you as well.
The addendum, we had two teachers that have the same name, Jan and Phillip. One's in one school, one from the other. Poor Ms. Harbert thought they were the same. And she realized after she put the agenda out that it was two separate people.
I make a motion to approve the personnel agenda with personnel addendum. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Only discussion is, I know I brought up that point and in regard to the, when we voted and we accepted two retirements. I just think that we really want to get out ahead of this and hire the two new principals and hire the assistant principals so that, you know, at the end of school, they know where they're going to be. And also, most people, if somebody within is hired, then that adds another position, teaching position, personnel position that we will have to fill at one of the schools. So that's why I don't think we need or don't want to wait till the end of, you know, the end of the year and then post it and then be going through all through the summer and all that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those, the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Brings it down to board member comment. Tucker?
Say, normally say, but you, you five that are watching, thank you. We're four now, Glenda. We certainly appreciate folks coming all the time though, but we just love to see it all. And take an opportunity to watch the stream, please. Get on there if you can't be here. Be involved.
Just that, you know, we had the privilege to go to Charleston for another stimulating State Board of Education meeting at the very odd with the state board and the new director and some of the changes that he's making. And as I, a lot of people ask me, you know, what did I think it was like? I thought it was going to be different with the new director, but it was pretty much like cold soup warmed over. And it was pretty much the same thing, you know? We had the legal aspect and we had the state, you know, and everybody's got plans, but nobody knows how we're going to solve all the problems that we have statewide in our school system. And, you know, I, I, I want to go sometime when somebody's going to say, this is how it's going to be done. But instead they throw out all these different, different ideas, you know, and it, it makes it difficult for the counties to, to, you know, to run their systems because everything's based on what the state board of education does and goes that way. So I just, like I said, I'd just like to see us, the state come out with their plan. It's going to be said, this is how we're going to do it. And then that lets the counties know what they can do, input they can add in running their county systems. And we as board members know what we're, you know, working with also. So. That's it.
Well, my experience was in cold soup warmed over. It was a little bit, it was a little bit lukewarm, but I do understand where this comes from. There's a lot of stuff that they talked about that was anonymous. I will say though, that the session on Saturday was, was really eye-opening. One of the things that, that everybody seems to be agreeing with, there was a senator who's proposing a reading bill. There's a, the board of education that's going into the science of reading. A state board of education that's moving toward that direction. And there's a Jim Brown, who's the executive director of the SBA, is going to, you know, start pushing, you know, SBA involvement, school board involvement in regards to the science of reading. This 95%, you know, for, for, for those that stayed around, this 95% group, which you've seen before, which I would like to have some more information on. I would like some cost information and I would like some other stuff, you know, what, what, what it takes to implement the program and things like that. To me, that, that is where, you know, a lot of the problems we were talking about tonight, it starts with literacy. If you can't, if you can't read, then you, you can't do math, you can't do English, can't do science, you can't do any of it. So that's my high horse, right? It starts with literacy. And if we can teach the children how to read, then we can, we can get into them the other core subjects they need to get into. Second thing is, it was brought to my attention, and I'd like Mr. Drica to look into this with you, that we are able to somehow pay for dinner for children. So there's an opportunity out there from my understanding that allows us to look at paying for dinners for children. So I'll get more information to you, but I, I mean, if you can start maybe paying, looking to see what you can find out. And supposedly we're allowed to be reimbursed. You don't make lunch.
Supporting programs.
If you send them home with a meal or set up meals so they can, they can come out to school. And they can, and they can maybe have meals after school or they can, at practice, they can show up and have meals at practice.
I, I think I'm familiar. I got to make sure we're on the same page. Okay. And I'd have to give probably to you, Harvard, to get the exact list of what we can do there. She is doing dinner alternative patients. Okay. I, I, to be upfront and honest, it's probably small scale. We is just for a group that stays. Want to get into details, but there's certain, there's certain group approaches going on.
That's right.
And at times she's doing dinners for them. There is other schools that maybe really literally have handled students. Instead of going to dinner, she's just going to have that program. But I can give you the full week together.
Yeah, look at it like, it was, I was talking with a gentleman before at Charleston, before we went to our meetings. And he was giving me information and I can't remember the name of the town.
But I am familiar with some. Panic.
I thought can all was going this way.
Yeah, I'm not familiar. But Calhoun does do some deep things. It may or may not work here, but I'm pretty.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I just wanted to test. Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
We can see that.
And then with the last thing was, can you let your ass? But there seems to be an inequity in some of the sports funding for female sports, male sports and other sports along with that. And maybe just maybe up the funds a little bit more attractively towards. Yeah, I'll talk about that in a bit. Yeah, so, but that's.
Well, and that kind of, that brings, I guess, one thing, well, two things I was saying. I do think about the Charles and framing, yeah, after 10 years, it's been saying over and over, it's slightly different. But I do think with the supercomputer break, I think they're better tracked. I do think that what he's talking about, he believes, and I think he'll get it put in on pretty pressed. The other thing, I would like to thank Mr. Lopez. And it seems like it always comes down to, and I kind of want to have that caution. We have, we've had to deal with it because I get phone calls when we have our youth sports trying to use our gyms. And they encounter such resistance from some of our principals. Taxpayer dollars paid for those gyms and levy money pays for those gyms. And, and if our youth need to use those, then we don't need to put a roadblock up. And we shouldn't be that hard to get them in there to use a gym if we're not using it. And, and we run into that and, you know, they pay, they pay our bills. So why, why do we want to make folks jump through hoops? But, but I will say every time that's occurred, someone's called me, called Mr. Lopez. It's been immediately taken care of. I mean, within, you know, 15 minutes, I get a call back and everything's fine. But it just seems like we always have to deal with it. And, you know, those gyms belong to the public. And, and it's not like it's displacing anything we've been going on. It's, it's on nights that, that they shouldn't be used. And, and that's how you pass limits.
Sure.
Is you're open and when you go ask them for money, it needs to be part of the community. So, but it's kind of my rant.
It also, though, I, I, I think that's what the gyms are for. But I also think that there has to be a way that the gyms are monitored, that they're there.
This is way off of that. I'll explain it to you. That, that's, the monitoring is not the problem in this case. It's just, it's just absolute resistance to letting the public use facilities. And it's like it's, it's, it's hurting them in some way that, I mean, we aren't having that problem. Especially if we've already got someone there that evening that we're paying, which they reimburse us for. But this is the, you know, in this last particular piece, this was the Parks and Recreations. Those are the folks who we partner with all summer long and they take care of our activities. And we just need to be a little better partners with them. So I'll leave it at that.
We'll throw a little something in, even farther than that. I addressed this, said this before anyway. I think every school should have two gyms. And to pay for that over 60 years, that's easy to do. And everybody could be out of that school by 5:00. There'd be no reason why you wouldn't be out there at 5:00. Then if they wanted to rent those, they didn't have to wait till 10:00 at night to rent them or, or 9:00 or whatever.
Like in some of these cases, there's, there's no one in there, you know, and they were promised that, then you run it. When you get there and you have a bunch of parents lined up and they're trying to get in and then you can't get into the building, even though you can see someone in there and they won't let you in, then who do you think they call? Not the school, they call us. They call her, they call me at home. So that, that's just kind of my, my rant. We don't, I've dealt with it, you know, for 10 years now. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Second. All those, the favors say aye.
Children, a piece, go a piece.